Happy March 11th. Good to see all your bright smiling faces. Good weather has returned again. We're in that things are starting to dry out. So with that, Ben, why don't you run through our meeting procedures?
All right, we seem to be having no glitches on the screen right now. Any online attendees are free to participate in the meeting. We ask that you get the attention of the chair to do so. You can do that by pressing star nine or using the raise hand function on the Zoom interface. And then star six or mute on mute depending on whether you're on Zoom or the phone. Planning Commission likes to be pretty open. This meeting does have very public listening session and Q and A and workshop. So we'll try to make sure that everyone is as involved as they want to be unless there are disruptions. In which case the chair has options for controlling the meeting.
Not really sure.
Cutting people off after three minutes disruptive individuals may be required to leave the meeting. Persistent disruptions may result in meeting being recessed and continually.
All right, we're placed on our agenda for general public permit. Rightums that are not on our agenda.
Mary, yes, I just like, you know, you all have your plan for your work plan for the year. And I would like to see the issue of easements and public access put on that work plan. Kind of let's get a map done of all the public access and public easements that we have in our community. And so that's it's accessible. And you know, maybe it is somewhere, but it's not something the public knows about. Public access is very important. And we don't have a lot of it. And we all remember the public access when the 2007 flood happened on Rock Creek and people were trying to get up there to see, well, the only public access is in front of a house, which the house didn't appreciate. And or else you could go on the bank and try to make your way up a river. So it's important, the public, the public has the right to public access if they exist and public easement. So I would like to see that put on their work plan if possible. And I think you're all aware, I did file an appeal of the shoreline development. Project of the hospitality. And it's been very interesting. I look forward to going full bore toward the end, but I thought I had to. It wasn't anything personal to anyone. But I, I do think that part of the public or the planning commission's job is to protect the public access and public easements for the public. We have a community of people who actually live here, work here, retire here and invest or vest in our community. And public access is one of the perks of living in any area, especially access to the shorelines of our waters. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Mary. So do you have any idea what the schedule will be for the hearings?
There is a schedule. It was, it was posted and today there was a deadline for something in March 14th. There's a deadline for something in March, something else. There's a deadline, March 29th, there's a deadline. Your attorney, Mr. Rose is public asset. And it's, I think, the city should have a lot of them too. Yes, yes, lawyers have it all sewn up. So interesting, it's another, it's another language.
Sure they do. Ben, with regard to Mary's first comment, did we as part of the parks planning process, did we get public access?
No, as part of the parks plan, but we did as part of shoreline public access plan. So we have an inventory of all the easements or access areas related to the shoreline areas. So within 200 feet of the Columbia River, Rock Cove or Rock Creek.
And how is that information available? It's part of it.
Some map in that plan. It does not include, when you went through the comprehensive plan for the 2022. And then you did add a, an objective to develop an inventory of city rights and right easements. It would be more accessible. We have not gone as far as completing that. By, 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 we did that for the shoreline public access.
That subset is done. And nothing at this point in time planned for the balance of those public right of ways or access. Thanks, Mary. Okay, next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes for the February 12th meeting. I've had a chance to take a look at those.
I have and.
No, I haven't seen it.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve.
Sorry.
February 12th.
You got a motion?
I'll second that.
Thank you, any further comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
Okay. Moving on, Ben, this is only next amendment.
Did discuss with the gentleman who's here for item number six and said, depending on turnout, we could consider moving that item farther up in the agenda. It's up to you all to whether you'd like to do that.
True, I don't have any objections to that. Charlie?
He was on the way the last time he did turn his video off. So hopefully that will.
We should start calling him now.
Charlie, are you with us? We do. So is there something, Ben, that we can do? Not me, but hopefully.
Mr. Cox is going to call you. Yes, please.
You know what that member is?
Well, darn it.
See, I, we can move into discussion items and I think, and we can do updates. There is potential action on the remaining items. And so to take that action, you would need a call.
Yeah, well, let's go through the discussion. Charlie, man? You back with us, Charlie?
Yeah, sorry, we were exalting about how, well, the technology seemed to be working earlier, but oh, well, here we are. But yes, I'm, I am here for the moment.
All right. What Ben has asked is we would be willing to move the agenda down and do the discussion of a planning commission vacancy. Are you?
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's a fine idea.
All right, Ben, why don't you lead the staff on this?
These staff reports are easy for me because it is just poaching from the last time around. You have vacancy in your planning commission. That when you have vacancy, we are to publish for two weeks in the paper solicit statements of interest and then interview candidates for a recommendation of appointments to the city council. In this case, we have one statement of interest that has been submitted. The staff report preload some questions that you might consider asking that the person who wants to be part of this group. And you, of course, can make others up on the fly before deciding whether or not to make recommendations. Tony Lawson is here for the interview. We neglected to contact him the last time, and so we held off the interview until this month.
Welcome, Johnny.
Thank you.
Do we want to lead off wants to make the lead on questions at this time in time? Charlie and?
I gladly will, because number one question is my number one question. If that's okay with you, Charlie?
Yeah, go ahead, Ann.
And why do you want to be on the planning commission?
Here in community service. Somebody has to step up and do volunteer positions like this. I've been on board of governors of my kids' elementary school in England. I've been on numerous HOA boards. I'm currently, actually, this is the month is the end of my two-year term on the board of directors of museum. So it's, it's a volunteer feeling of service.
Charlie?
Yeah, I guess I don't really have any questions. I appreciate your interest, Tony or Mr. Lawson, and the fact that you have a construction background. I think that's going to be helpful in addition to the fact that you've obviously, you know, spent time on things like the museum board. So, you know, seems to me that the addition of construction experience would be a good thing for the composition of of the commission. You don't have any active interest in real estate or development projects in the city, I assume, right?
No, I don't.
Yeah, that would be my only question is, is, you know, is there any potential conflict of interest? But it certainly doesn't look like it from your resume. And if you're not involved in, in development at the moment, then I think that checks that box for me.
No, just finished building a house, but it was a, a personal residential house and complete.
Congratulations.
That could be enough of a test, believe me. So, you know, you've been through this process once. We had a chance to visit with you. What was it? Was it two years ago?
Well, whenever Charlie came on board, it was Charlie and I sat for the interviews.
Yeah, yeah. And so, you know, you, you've been here in the city for a while now. What do you see as the sort of key issues that the planning commission faces?
Oh, well, obviously, it's this pressure that's happening. We have increased of real estate prices. We have development that is there's an influx of money in the community. The development of the community has pressure on it to develop that is not necessarily in the same direction that the existing residents would like. There seems, there's, to me, there seems to be a a, an opposition from current residents to the new residents with money that are coming in. And there's, there's a feeling that the town, that I see the people that present me, that the town is losing some of its own control of where it wants to go. But that's from people that have been here for a while. I don't see the pressure of that changing. That this is a desirable place to be. The gorge is a desirable place to be. The pressure on real estate is going to continue to go up. I think it's going to be a, a juggling act to do that so that the town kind of remains true to what it wants to be. And at the same time, allow for development that's beneficial to the town.
And I assume that since it's your second time around, you do have the time, you know, to, to serve.
I'm retired. Yeah.
I'm retired too, but I find myself pretty busy. I, yeah, but I get, since you've been here before, I assume that you're willing to make that time available to to make these meetings. And, you know, occasionally, you know, we have committees and work groups to take on certain issues, whether it's annexation policy, or we may work on some of the sewer issues and parking. So there are, there are those, it's not just a monthly meeting, I guess, I would say. It's staying in touch.
Yeah, yeah, but excuse me, may I ask you the same question of you? What do you see the, the most pressing concerns of the planning commission in the city?
What do I see? I see our most pressing concerns right now are basically associated with housing. And what we can make available for housing. And it ties, it's a complicated issue in terms of what areas have the public services that will support housing? What's zoned? What are the ownerships? How do you encourage housing trends that support the needs of the community? In terms of being affordable? And being located in a place that we can serve effectively and cost efficiently? So there's a lot of things that the planning commission can influence. There's few things that we actually control. And so we looked at the city council to exercise, you know, some of that additional supporting authority.
Yeah, I guess I would add, I would add to that. I agree with that about housing. And, you know, you think about the fact, this is mentioned in the, in the parks plan that we're going to talk about tonight. And only 23% of our households have children, school-aged children. You know, making the city active both economically and financially to young people. Plenty of retired folks, Mr. Lawson, like you and me and some others in this room. But, you know, we want, we want a, a population base that includes families and children. And, and to me, that gets at the issue of affordability, of course, and, and diversity of housing types. So that young people that want to start out and have their first child and, and own something have a, a chance of doing that. And that's not a unique problem to Stevenson. It's just that it's now upon us like it's already been upon a lot of other places where young people have been priced out. So it's just another way of describing the same problem, but that's a particular, particular focus for me.
Yeah.
And I'm kind of on the same page growth in an area that seems to have so much want and need to grow with public services keeping up as well as the topography of the city. You know, we are just straight uphill for the most part. So quite a few different, but same issues, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, our growth here in recent years has been fairly substantial in terms of what we've seen in terms of, you know, new houses, new, new housing development. And I saw it, it sets up an interesting contrast. I think a lot of these folks that have moved here in the last five years have in some ways different expectations in terms of what it means to live in a, in a city. And you've got folks that have lived here for many, many years. And they see a, a change coming. Some would characterize it actually as that is a threat to the character of the community. And I think, as you said, change is going to come. It's, it's how do we make change something that we, we can all certainly live with if that's supported.
Yeah. I live up on Angel Heights Road. And I think there have been about four additions that have moved there since I moved there. And I'm retired and all four of the other people came in, they're retired. You see lots of people coming in with no children and spending retirement home money, which makes it very difficult for single families to move into the area.
It does, yeah. Here in terms of employment opportunities in the community makes a big difference too. Because we see you don't have to go back too long ago. To where more people or the people that lived here, a majority of the people that lived here worked here. Now, that's not the case. And a lot of our homes what has it been in the housing study? Roughly one in five was not a permanent resident. So, you know, they're the character of the community is changing. And I think people are sensitive to that. So yeah, it's, it's a challenge for all of us, I think, in terms of making the city what it is we want. Any other questions, Charlie and?
I, I have no more.
Well, then I would ask for a motion on this particular recommendation to the city council, because ultimately it is the city councils.
I move that we, that we recommend Mr. Lawson to the city council to be appointed to the commission.
Is there a second?
My second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you very much. It's always nice to be wanted.
Thank you. Thank you. Looking forward to working with you.
Likewise, Charlie.
All right. Okay, Ben, let's go back to our regular schedule, schedule, agenda sequence here. So we're zoning text amendments.
All right, zoning text amendment starts on page five of your packets. We discussed this the last time, potential changes to the street side setbacks of the R2 and the R3 zone. You asked for Charlie, do we have audio right now?
Yeah, yeah.
Got plenty colored lights.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm not seeing any funny colored lights, but I can see you and I can hear you just fine. I just keep turning my video off to make sure that I'm not overtaxing the bandwidth and cause the problem again.
It's that no part.
Okay, so you asked to hold a more informal workshop, Q and A session with any of the interested public that, that was here before you decided your next steps, whether you're going to hold a public hearing, let the city council hold a public hearing, modify anything involved. So as part of that, it was the expectation that we contacted all the impacted property owners. So all those corner lot owners in the R2 and 3 district were sent a notice, a letter that included the information on the potential change, including table and how that would change plus the, the figure for what driveways would look like in that side yard area. And we're encouraged to submit written comments or questions in advance of the workshop to the city. We received none on this issue. And I don't believe anybody is here necessarily to talk about that, but I'll actually get them that up to the public at large going forward. Potential next steps after the meeting tonight would be making a recommendation of city council to approve the amendments, altering the, the current draft in some way, conducting additional public outreach or holding your own public hearing or abandoning this issue entirely.
Okay, is there anybody else who would like to offer testimony on this particular topic?
I guess, can you just explain what the consequences are of changing? And perhaps?
Yeah. Yeah. So I brought this up. So this is off of Hot Springs Alameda in the R2 zone. And these lots front onto Hot Springs Alameda and they have side yards adjacent to Roosevelt Street. Roosevelt Street in this location is, Charlie, I have not shared the screen. I will do so now. All agrees. So Roosevelt is 50 foot wide right of way. Here, and this is where we talked about using the assessor maps is subject to several errors, but I wanted to give an example that I think that works. So 50 foot wide right of way, if we applied 15 foot side yards onto, onto that, then there should be 80 feet between the building walls. And if we go from approximately
And you said this is R2, correct?
This is the R2 district. Yeah, if we go from approximately the building wall to a building wall, that is not 80 feet. That's much less than 80 feet. And so if there was a calamity for one or both potentially of these property owners, the building fell down in snow and ice. There was a fire that required it to be rebuilt to current standards. Then those standards would push the, the footprint of those structures to be much smaller or into a different location. So it's, I say, adding insult to injury. They've, they've experienced the fire and now they come to the city to say, I'd like to rebuild. And the city would have to say, well, you can't write that. That could still be an outcome of this, but five feet less of that existing footprint would be locked my way into, I think, a triple negative. So they would be able to use five feet more of that side yard territory if this change were made. That is one example in the R2 zone. Moving down into the R3 zone, which is just down here.
Where are the pastries?
R3 starts at Jefferson Street. So going into this one, Jefferson, I believe is a 60 foot right of way in this area. I'm sorry. Roosevelt looks to be 55 in this area. So if we have 30 on top of that, 45, if we had 30 on top of that, then it should be 70 between the building walls. Same, same error. Potentially we have that, but also potentially this home does not have a 15 foot side. So this is a case of where our regulations don't match what's on the ground. What's the Stevenson that we know for those districts and trying to align them a little bit better. It also aligns with the changes that were made by the city of a couple of years ago for front yards in the R3 district. It's currently the 10 foot setback from the front yard. So this vacant lot here would have a 10 foot setback to a front building wall. Half that, half that distance, but on the street side yard, they'd have a 15 foot. It would be wider on the side yard than it would be on the front yard. And so it's aligning those to just in that R3 district. It does, that flexibility doesn't come at the expense of pedestrian or vehicular safety or convenience. So if there's a driveway, that driveway needs to be at least 20 feet to accommodate a vehicle before it would hang off of property line or sidewalk. If the sidewalk's an amusement or roadway, if it were somehow a problem closer to the and it would apply vision clearance areas. So the drivers that are reversing can see pedestrians coming along on a adjacent sidewalk or travel corridor.
Thanks, Ben. Other questions, Mary? Do you have anything else?
Just to clarify something like Stevenson was built haphazardly. I think a good term. And so some garages may be over somebody else's property line, which there are some here and other days. So when something exists, like it does exist. Like it does exist and if something catastrophic does happen. Um, how can you tell people not to rebuild on the old ground footprint? No matter what your new regulations are. Uh, I I, you know, that that is part of the character of the city. That things are here, there and everywhere and look different and they're not cookie cutter houses. They uh. There are issues with the boundaries and and that, but that's what makes it what it is, so. I I guess from a, i- if somebody owns something. Would this really impact them, like you said in that previous example, and you said when it would. You know, that if their house burned down, they'd have to somewhat, and what if they can't on their existing law?
I think that's what we're trying to address here in these changes. Is to accommodate what already exists. Out there, I I look at this as is largely kind of a housekeeping measure in terms of. Recognizing that what we have out there. Doesn't fit very well with what the the built environment is in that case. So.
Yeah, I agree with that, but I think it's I think it's also more than that, I mean, back to the discussion that we just had with. Our new member Tony, um, you know, about housing opportunity and variety of housing types, I mean. And what's getting built, I mean, mostly what's getting built is big expensive single family houses for retirees like me. Um, and and uh what's not getting built is a variety of smaller housing types that. Might enable young people to buy and we're not seeing that much redevelopment and infill versus homes and new subdivisions or homes outside the city limits. On big lots in the county, so anything that makes, you know, more housing types practicable. In, you know, these these medium density zones to me is at least worth exploring, and I think this is, this is a good potential change.
We're still maintaining those pedestrian safety aspects in terms of sidelines. So. Yet I. This to me seems like a pretty straightforward and logical change to these wins.
So how many parcels will be affected by this? How many would it make a difference?
Because I can't be definitive with the assessor maps for um. Just how many are non-conforming versus um conforming, I can't answer the second question. For the first question, there are thirty corner parcels in the R two zone. And thirty corner parcels in the R three zone, so they are all subject to this side yard um setback regulation. Based on my assessment of the assessor. Twelve of the thirty in the R two um are suspected of non-conforming. Six of the thirty in the R three are suspected of non-conforming. And so that's eighteen that would benefit in some way, or that's a complete benefit and um they'd be able to rebuild in their uh existing footprint. Or partial benefits, or whether they're additional um non-conforming, I wasn't able to to see, I don't know. Um, but it's it's some relief, I think what I. What summarizes, you're saying, is potentially even having less of a setback than the ten foot. Um, which is just not something that the planning commission would consider, not what was put forward um. But could be part of a revised.
I would just like to address something that Mr. Hale said. Uh, infill is. Sounds great, but you're gonna get pushback from the community. People live here because they like living how they're living. And they don't want to see their neighbor across their morning coffee out the window.
Well, by infill, I, Mary, by infill, I mean, there are a lot of vacant lots in the city that aren't getting built on. Um, they're perfectly legal vacant lots. Um, and and uh I'm not talking about people chopping up the lot they live on, I'm talking about vacant land in the city compared. There's more development happening in new subdivisions and outside the city and the county than there is on those vacant lots in the city. So this doesn't change that whole picture, this is only a small piece of it, but.
I'm not sure how many lots we have within the city.
Quite a few.
I don't know, I it'd be nice to do it, I know there's some. Both vacant lots, but there's one up the street that's fifty feet wide and a hundred feet deep. And uh that isn't built on and because of setbacks. And the way where it's located, so uh it might be empty land, but it's might not be buildable the way it is. So, yeah, it would be nice, uh, you bring up a good point, it would be nice to have a number of exactly how many empty lots do we have? Are they, do they fit the setback? What you're talking about and can they actually be built on?
Yeah, this is a small piece of that big picture, yeah.
Does that remember that picture of the city of Stevenson? If it was the Stevenson lots and they're they were tiny and not very wide and everything and people. Wound up clumping two lots together in order to make a buildable lot.
Yeah, the original plot of the city. Hundred foot lots, but. And those have been combined and. Create a buildable lot, I think we're, you know, we're not changing that, I think what we're, what we're trying to do. Is to allow the use of those existing lots without imposing a standard on there that.
Existing.
Well, yeah. Equivalent with what we're seeing for, you know, for other properties. Anything else, Mary?
I I I just, are you going to have a? A list of lots that are empty? In the city? I didn't think that there were that many. That people would want to build.
If it's germane and you guys need it for this decision, we can produce that.
I I don't think it's germane for this decision, but it's just one more factor in this. You know, this, this is a small adjustment in maybe a suite of issues that we'll look at over time to try to make. Make it more practical to build the city we already have and then also to fill in some of the empty spaces in it.
Yeah, I'm not. Not so sure it's necessary for this decision, I think as we as we step back and we start looking about. How we're dealing with the zoning within the city. And what we have out there is is vacant lands to meet housing needs, yeah, I think it is probably germane. In terms of doing that and how we how we start to look at how that fits with our annexation policy that we want to work on. I did the. To the sewer extension issues that are coming up, yeah, I think I think it is important for those broader uses. Because I I think like Charlie. I think we need to be looking at what is in the R two and R three zones that isn't built on, uh, that could help. That quote affordable housing support. Others? Yeah. Charlie, anything else?
Well, so what's next with this, uh, Ben or Jeff, where where do we go from here with uh with the text that's before us?
Well, we can make a recommendation uh to the city council that they make this amendment to the uh. Of zoning ordinance.
Okay. Well, I think we should do that, I don't know if how other members feel, but I think we should move this forward. If if it's ready, we don't need it, we don't need further public hearings on this, uh, Jeff, in order to. Check that box, are we are we already there?
I think we're, I think we're there, you know, one thing that we went out of the last meeting with was asking Ben to go out to all the affected lot holders. Well, we got nothing back from them, um. So, you know, I I'm not so sure that, you know, that there's much more to be gleaned by holding yet another. You know, public meeting or a hearing on this, uh, I think that's probably logical. Uh, to send it to the to the city council because they will have to have a public hearing on.
Yeah, they'll have one, yeah, and and the outreach that you did, Ben, is, you know, if if those folks were not happy with this change, we would have heard about it. Okay, well, then I'll I'll move that we recommend uh the set of changes to the council for uh for adoption.
Is there a second?
There's a second for me.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say aye, motion carries.
Nice work on this, Ben, I think, you know, you did a really good outreach and it obviously shows that um. You know, no news is good news in the sense that if those property owners didn't like this, we would, we would, they'd be with us tonight.
Well, yeah, I think in many ways, it's, it's bringing some consistency. Uh, into the ordinance in terms of how we treat other folks. Yeah, I mean, it's kind of interesting, if you've got a corner lot. On that that side of your house, you don't have the same flexibility as your neighbor next to you who's. Get his front yard is on that street, so I think basically we're we're just bringing a greater equity into this process. It's one of those logical things to do, we have been. We are now looking at.
Flood plane management, um, this one was also discussed at your February meeting where you set public involvement expectations. This starts on page uh. Twenty of your packet. Okay. Uh, in this case, you asked to hold a public hearing. To what you asked to inform all the impacted property owners of the changes with floodplain. Uh, maps and the floodplain regulations invite them to comment at a public hearing. Uh, we sent those notices out to all those property owners, we neglected to publish in the paper that it was a public hearing. And so considering this more of a listening session uh in front of you, so. As staff, we didn't come through with your request um for for uh holding an official public hearing tonight, however, the notices were sent out. Uh, those notices led to two property owners contacting the city for um. Floodplain maps, what those changes to the maps were, we were able to point them to the Department of Ecology website that's uh maintain those. Uh, over the weekend, uh, we received uh an email from another owner that's uh whose property. Has flooding issues or high water issues, um, but is not in the floodplain, so they weren't uh provided with those maps or the changes. Or that direct opportunity to con- uh, comment on the regulatory changes, um, but those public comments are. Here for you on page thirty-four of your packet. And then uh one more part of the preamble with the the public release draft that you all reviewed at the last meeting, I. Scrubbed it uh from the recommendations that FEMA had made, included it in our ordinance structure. Send that back to them for review, um, to say, hey, was this supposed to be included or was there anything different here? Uh, they provided additional comments on that draft that I that I sent out, so those additional comments are reflected here. In uh yellow. Um, and largely that's the definition of flooding, which uh expands the definition. From what we think of as just high waters coming up into the home to include land movements. Uh, if that land movement is triggered by water or something, some land uh land movement could be. Uh, land coming out from under you or land coming in on top of you. Uh, that type of uh hazard or disaster is not. Is widespread, um, but it's not in, it's not tied to the floodplain maps that we saw that. I believe that it provides uh Stevenson property owners with a form of landslide insurance uh that's. Is otherwise unavailable. Uh, I that whether or not it does or it doesn't. Doesn't really impact um that it's inclusion or exclusion in our ordinance, uh, but it is required to be included by by FEMA. The um blue areas are uh remain the components that FEMA has suggested that we include. Um, those suggestions come from their experience and the experience of others in the state of Washington and the Washington model floodplain. Ordinance, um, so where you have any sense of control on this, uh, it's. Whether the blue areas are included or excluded.
We didn't advertise for a public hearing. You still do that?
So you established a public hearing as a a public involvement expectation of the planning commission's work. A public hearing is required, a public hearing is scheduled in front of the city council. And so one will be held by the city, um, if you are intense on. Uh, hearing from the public directly on this before making a recommendation, we can pull off and notice it in the the paper.
Well, how do others think, I mean, we you you did go out and talk to the offensive landowners, the. The additional language is really not very onerous in terms. Uh, at least is I is I read it. But my understanding is that in order to adopt these maps and upgrade the ordinance, it's that critical step. For those potentially affected landowners to be able to secure. Flood insurance, if if we don't ha- ha- adopt those maps and and update the ordinance. Those folks may be at risk in terms of being able to get flood insurance.
Um, and just a reminder, there are three structures that are in the um floodplain, the special flood hazard. Area, that's nothing, um, what what was floodable in Stevenson was largely flooded with a bottle dam. Uh, and the second powerhouse is the Bonneville Dam, uh, what remains floodable is also subject to. Uh, habitat protection, shoreline uh protections and critical areas habitat protection, so. Um, the likelihood that we're gonna add many more than three to this is uh minimal, and if it is um. To be added, it's already gonna be a a large investment that'll want to protect it from flooding uh consistently. So, no, I don't think it's um. Onerous for our property owners or likely to be encountered by very many of them.
Basically, not only not onerous, it's actually to the benefit, if it allows those property owners then to. To obtain that insurance if they want, so this is really a service to those property owners in effect. Charlie and any thoughts?
Yeah, it makes sense, um, and and I agree, I don't think the changes are, um, they don't expand the scope of it. Really much, if at all.
So, we have an option, I guess we could, if you wanted to, we could conduct a public hearing, or we could, again, similar to what we did with the. Corner lot setbacks, refer that to the city council uh with the recommendation that they adopt this. And uh, you know, they would conduct a a public hearing. You know, again, um, I'm not so sure that the time and effort to put together a public hearing at the planning commission has much value. In terms of this, um, particularly the city councils already.
I agree.
Yeah, if we were adopting new maps that affected, you know, hundred property owners or something and brought them into the flood. Hazard zone that they weren't before, I mean, that'd be a whole different kettle of fish than this, but this is pretty ministerial, I think it's. Appropriate for us to send it on for the council for whatever amount of public hearing they think is appropriate and adoption, so, you know, get it done.
Just a grammatical thing on now page thirty-three. On your uh repeal of conflicting ordinances and provisions. All ordinances or provisions of this code which are inconsistent with the provisions of this chapter shall be. And then those and the same are repealed, that doesn't extend. Is there something missing?
Probably two commas, shall be comma and the same are comma repeals, um, but I don't.
There's nothing at the end of that sentence. Yeah, it just doesn't. Let's say. Shall be and the same are repealed, commas make a difference.
Need to have one little movement over there.
You'll do the grammatical check, but. I guess at this point, I would entertain a motion that we recommend. I guess at this point I would entertain a motion that we recommend this amendment.
So move.
Yep.
Got a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed say nay. Motion carries.
Just a note to where you're, you're delivering a recommendation to the city council where the city council discussions involve many changes to your recommendations. I'm doing an evaluation of what those changes are and how they reflect my understanding of your, your policy intents and what you're trying to achieve. If they stray very far from that, I'll usually recommend that you send that back to the planning commission to review additionally. If they're not straying very far and thinking moving forward, I'm not making that recommendation, but so if, if the public hearings that they conduct on either one of these issues do stray. I will advocate to, to send it back to you for.
Thanks, Ben. You're not going to stray, are you, Dave?
No, we don't do it.
Moving on. Parks Plan.
Moving on to the.
Is this an action item for us?
It is if you choose it. So there's no requirements that you recommend on adoption of Park Plan to the city council, but you have been involved in its creation and updated. And so keeping you involved, meaning if you choose to make a recommendation of approval or make any suggested changes before recommending approval, I wanted to give you all the opportunities to do that. This is the full draft of the Parks Plan. Last time he saw it in just a presentation form where they were talking about the goals, the public involvement process and the capital improvement projects that have identified. This document's everything related to that.
Maybe we're going to have a trifecta tonight and recommend three different things to the council because I'm, I'm a real fan of this document. I think, I think the combination of our staff and our consultants have done a really good job on this and you know, there's three parts that you just referenced, man. I mean, it's, I think it's clear and and compelling in terms of, you know, vision and goals. I think it's, it's impressive in terms of of involving people in crafting the plan, listening to us, listening to a lot of other people. And then I think it's also particularly good in terms of a clear and, and realistic set of, you know, priorities and improvements. So I, I just think this has been really well done. And I, I see, I see it as, you know, it's going to be a living document. People are going to be using it. You know, for quite a while as, as it gets implemented. So I just compliments, you know, to, to staff and to and to the consulting team that built this plan because I think it's a first-class piece of work.
Thank you, Charlie. Anne, what are your thoughts?
No, I agree. I have no problem sending it on to the city council since it's a great document. And I agree with, agree with Charlie. Wonderful work.
Yeah, the, the process, I think that they went through, the workshops that they went through, engaging the community. I think it's great. I think the plan is great. The challenge will be the implementation of the plan. And, you know, I think from our prior discussion, one of my concerns is we have recreational facilities in public lands that are owned by multiple agencies, be it the county, the port, you know, the, the city. And, and how do you tie all those together? How do you build that cooperative, that collaborative process in terms of managing all of those lands? And I, I think that is the challenge. It's more than just what the city does. It's what the city does in concert with those other public agencies in terms of the actions.
Yeah, I don't, I hope I'm not being unreal, unreasonably realistic, unreasonably unrealistic when I say this, but boy, I can't get my words out tonight. But I mean, I think the, the process of building the plan and involving those other entities. And then some of the specific recommendations are going to tend to pull people towards working together. For example, you know, the idea of using the pool as more of a community center. You know, that's going to require cooperation among, you know, different entities. Working with the school, a school district on playgrounds. So yeah, it's, the, the assets are owned by different entities. But the plan's really clear in that, hey, this is what the community wants. These are the priorities. The accident of ownership is not really important to the community. Maybe these public agencies ought to keep working together. So I hope that's the message.
You know, I do too, Charlie. You know, and I think working together, you leverage everybody's resources. And also looking at how you apply for grants. When you've got multiple public agencies coming in saying, we're working together, we need a grant. Those are much more competitive individual agencies going to those, those granting agencies. And, you know, it's just, you know, I guess I really like the plan. I just want that energy to continue. I don't want people that were engaged in this plan to say, well, the plan's done. I, I can walk away. And, you know, I've seen too many times, and I'm sure you have too, Charlie.
Oh, yeah.
Those plans can become what they refer to as shelf art and we, we don't want that. Case. We want this to be the reason for action out there.
Yeah, I think it's clear enough and that the, the priority lists are, you know, short enough and clear enough that I, I, I think it has a good chance of not being a shelf study as long as you know, everybody keeps trying to work together.
So with that, is there a motion to recommend the adoption of this Parks Plan by the city council?
I will make that motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? Mary, any, you want to?
You know, I, I think I've spoken in the past, the courthouse plaza project has gotten a lot of opposition at this point and I, it might not come to fruition the way people wanted to. People want to keep it an open space and don't want to see it cut up into little pieces. So I'm not sure if, if it's part, I, I just saw a picture of it in here and it doesn't say that it's going to be built on. It just says the property is there. And I did have a person approach me this week about Walnut Park and why it wasn't better taken care of. And that, and why it was rented to one individual's business, some like, and not a park. So people, yeah, open spaces are important there in the community. And that, so, yeah, that's the only objection that I'll see here. The rest of it looks really good.
All right. Any further discussion? Have a motion on the table in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carries. Thank you much.
Yeah, it's a, it's a great plan and I just want, I can't stop myself from coming on the Courthouse Plaza. I, I will predict that ninety percent of those who oppose the Courthouse Plaza will be there to hear the music at the first public performance there. You know, no, change is hard, but the only time that space gets used now is Fourth of July parade and it'll get used a lot more. And it changes hard. People have a hard time seeing it, but it's a good plan and it will enliven the downtown and give people a place to gather. I think it's a great project and I'm glad that the plan makes it a centerpiece.
We'll have to agree to disagree.
Well, I want to call your attention to the, the process for that. So we've already done our CIPA review. We've made a determination non-significance for the adoption of this plan. Future projects would be evaluated through their own environmental checklist. We received one comment that those comments are from the Department of Fish and Wildlife about the importance of connecting the dots between what habitat provides for open space and what the city would intend to provide for open space. And so open space is one of the things in this plan that it shows that it's our first. So this is our first plan for parks, recreation and open space that we have. We've done a great job identifying the parks and recreation issues, less so on open space. And when I say that, I I want to just predict the future a little bit is that when people think about Stevenson and what they like about Stevenson, a lot of it is going to be the tree canopy. A lot of it is going to be that open space that's on private property that's developed. And your regulations will protect that for habitat purposes. But we don't have just broad scale protections to prohibit the removal of forests that aren't specifically habitat related or, or that aren't adjacent to the stream. So as Stevenson changes or developments like Chinnagir happen, people feel a sense of loss because that was open space in their minds. We're not explicitly planning for open space in the sense that we don't have a level of service standards as part of this. We have actions identified to get us there in the next round. The Department of Fish and Wildlife provides some very good guidance about how to do that in the next round. It's just not something that was fully addressed with this. That will go, your recommendation will go to the city council for their potential approval. Mary brought up the, the most controversial thing that I've heard so far is that, that Park Plaza, Courthouse Plaza. So if anything were to change from the city council's review, I would imagine that coming out as one of those five or six capital improvement projects, whether it's in there or not, doesn't mean that it's going to be built, but if it's in there, then it's eligible for grants and it can move forward.
You know, and I, I, I can't predict how that decision was, if that outcome is going to come, but I would hate to see it come out of the plan. Because I think even if it's, I think there could be very modest minor modifications that make that space much more usable for the public. You know, something, you know, if, if that were intense development for public spaces is, is not acceptable. I still think there's room there to improve that as a public space for public use. So I would hate to see that come out of the plan.
You know, yeah, I mean, maybe it needs to be done incrementally. Maybe it needs to be a phase one and let people experience a little of it, but it's, I believe it's fundamentally a good idea to have a public gathering place in the core of our city. We don't have that now. People will love it and use it, but it is change and change is hard.
Okay, thought of the month, Ben.
Thought of the month, I am preparing to do my taxes. And happy to have that mortgage interest deduction as part of things, but I provided an assessment by US Congress that reviews that in terms of housing affordability. It's a long one. It's interesting. And also connects one of the dots with how the mortgage markets work to increase housing prices. So we, we try here to do what we can do to make it a different type of development possible in the marketplace. Marketplace is still very much in favor of single-family homes, mortgage. I say that's based on the mortgage practices and the financial markets and the incentives involved there and then the incentives or the increase in the demand side based on those interests, I'm sorry, yeah, the interest deductions for the, lost, you know, the word I'm thinking of though. So thoughts of the month. Big issues impacting us and our ability to influence housing prices in Stevenson.
Yeah, and I think as we discussed that it is really a multifaceted problem. I mean, the city can do so much. You know, you can buy that infrastructure. You could zone lands for development. But that doesn't doesn't make it happen. You know, it's the it's the demand for housing. It's the builders, it's the lenders. It's the financial incentives. And unless they all line up. I mean, I, I like to look at our maps in terms of what we have zoned for a higher density development. And the fact that they've been zoned that for years and nothing has happened. And it's not because of anything the city did. It's because you don't have a willing landowner. And you have small businessmen in this community where their profit margin is, is much better, building single-family residences than is smaller residences or, or even whole family. So it's, it, it's going to require, I think, a lot more. I mean, the city can be in the leadership role than the city council can certainly further that. But unless you bring those other parties together, I, I don't know how you.
Well, it's more policy than anything else. The policies have to change. Yeah, governor wants to build a million new homes. Okay, so even if you build them, are they going to be affordable? Because people with money will buy them. So unless you have a policy in place that says, no, these houses are going to be affordable. They're going to be affordable for the next hundred years at affordable prices for people with a salary that they can afford these homes. And look at what, what's happened in Seattle. You have Airbnb's, you have Zillow buying houses, you have LLCs and for nationals buying homes and taking them off the market. Even Hood River realized that they couldn't do vacation rentals because they were losing their workers. So it's the policies of our communities that are making housing unaffordable. It's not just the lack of housing. There's plenty of houses in Underwood, but they're second homes for people who don't even live here.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with that, Mary. But again, I think it's not just what we, what we do as a planning commissioner, even the city council does. You know, it, it takes a broader base.
Well, the state legislature is going to have to become involved.
Well, you know, that and the private sector as well. And there are some innovative things that are going on out there in, in some of these larger urban areas. There's housing land frests now that are providing low-income housing.
Well, Mid-Columbia Housing is building one hundred and twenty-seven, is it one hundred and twenty-seven units in the river and then is something in the Dallas. But it's, it's deed it as affordable. And it's not going to be available for people with a lot of money to buy them.
Well, thanks for those notes. We're I'm anxious that you haven't had a chance to get the first section.
First one is far easier to get through than the second one.
Any last words, Charlie? Anything you want to share before we wrap up?
He said no.
Oh, that was brief.
Well, I would like to share from the parking perspective. Ben shared with the parking committee a, what do you call that? Questionnaire. That was really, I was very impressed by it. I think that it will lead to us having opinions shared with us that we probably didn't realize. Does that make sense with the way that it lays out? So I'm anxious for you all to see that. He's been working hard on the parking.
Yeah, it's been able to devote some time to parking again, finally. And it does feel good to create a decision-making framework for that committee to provide something to all. What they'll, what they're working on is recommending specific improvement projects for adding ADA accessible spaces and then adding spaces generally and how that might occur. We'll cost those out, make estimates that could be used for a fee and lieu option instead of developing a parking lot on site. You could pay a fee and lieu to the city for implementation of those improvement projects. It's coming together. Have been doing that now that the septic and sewer discussion is moving into its next phase. So the city council will have the option to issue a public release draft at their next meeting. Or hold off and have some sort of workshop before they, they get into Or hold off and have some sort of workshop before they they get into a document they want to push to the public. We applied for several tree grants. We did get one of them. State Department of Natural Resources runs a urban forestry program. They had more cash this year than they had in the previous ten years or something put together. They were nervous that they were going to be able to spend everything, and so they were encouraging people to submit projects for consideration. City submitted five. Several others apparently heard their call to submit projects for consideration too. So they were in a position where they had to filter through. And so we got one of the five. The one that we got though is an exciting one, advancing the city council's goals for undergrounding utility lines. And so this would be a utility conflict canopy preservation plan. And so right now with the way that the insurance world has changed, where power companies are liable for wildfires and calamities. Power companies are responding by cutting down more trees. We're approaching that issue head-on to say, all right, do we value the the urban forest canopy that we have here? And so how much will will show those corridors where if power lines went underground, some tree canopy would be preserved. The cost of putting it underground versus doing nothing or dealing with insurance in case of calamities. And come out the other end with a plan for what should be underground, what we can build into our other plans and funding requests and get that done. So it is an exciting one. It was fairly novel, which I think helped our chances with it to to tie those two issues together. So happy to be able to transition into that after we wrap up parks and parking and septic and sewer.
And once we have, I think, have a little bit clearer picture on that ultimate septic and sewer wrap-up, I think we'll go back to looking at at the annexation policy as well. So this is a sync.
Yeah, we've been waiting for that. We've been waiting for that horse to get in front of our cart for a while now, so.
The other issue, the the shoreline permit that you all approved in January was appealed. Mary noted that. Timelines for a decision on that are in flux right now. Currently, it's middle to end of May is when we would expect a hearing and decision. But there's consideration of extending that to beginning of May.
That's just the hearing itself is in mid-May. And they've got a hundred and eighty days to do their decision, I believe. Robert can clarify. But the hearing is on May twentieth.
So that's moving, moving through the appeal process. Charlie, you thanked staff and I took credit by saying thank you for the Parks Plan, but I did want to acknowledge Tiffany's effort there too. That's one of the first projects able to bring her on as planning and public works assistants from the very beginning and and work with her on. It was great to have her help and and keep things moving forward on time and and get it done. So thank you.
Yeah, well, kudos to to her and to all of you. It's a good piece of work.
Yes, it is. And it's nice to have that come to fruition. Yeah, ready to go. Anything else tonight? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
One second.
And the internet mostly cooperated tonight. Hooray. Take care, y'all. Thanks.